And we are live, you may begin.
Thank you. Okay, Ali.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. Before we launch into the presentation, we are gonna, I'm gonna entertain a motion to pass the minutes from May 10th, from special, the special board meeting on May 10th.
So moved.
Seconded, Nikki Vandermeulen.
Thank you.
All in favor, aye, or raise your hand? And I'm sorry, folks, I actually have to scroll through to see everybody because you're spread out today, so keep your hands up. Alright, any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes seven, oh.
Thank you.
Alright, and then I will turn over the chairship of the meeting to our guest, Louise. Thank you so much for joining us. Dr. Jenkins, before we start, would you like to, like to contribute?
Yes, first of all, I'd just like to say welcome, okay? And to everyone, I'm glad that we're gonna have this opportunity just to hear another perspective in terms of the superintendent's evaluation. I've done quite a few in my time, and, uh, but we have not done one together. And it's very important that we calibrate in terms of where we are, and so I have looked through the document, Louise, and so I am very hopeful that we come out of here with some common understanding about where we're trying to go as a district with the evaluation process. So thank you for being here, and thank all of you for showing up to just get educated about this, because this is a pretty big deal.
Well, thank you, Dr. Jenkins, and good evening to the rest of you. It's a beautiful evening, so I, um, I will try to get through this, and I hope, I hope we can have a good, strong discussion. But I don't want to take up too much of your evening today, but by, um, I'm going to be sharing my screen, but before I do, I'll introduce myself. Uh, my name is Louise Blankenheim, as you know, and I am a retired superintendent. Uh, I retired from KEEL, uh, four years ago, and I, prior to KEEL superintendent, I was at the central office in Green Bay. Uh, so I am now working with WSB and very much enjoying my work with school boards. And I do want to commend all of you for, first of all, hanging in there this year, because it's, it's been quite a year and of all, with all the challenges we have, but I'm very happy to be here tonight and to talk with you about the superintendent evaluation framework that we have going at WSB. Um, tonight, I'll, I'll walk you through this, and at any point in time, if you have a question, please just stop and ask that question. We can have a dialogue back and forth. Um, I do have a PowerPoint with me, but I, I'll, I do want it to be a conversation as well. Uh, so, uh, I will, if there aren't any questions, we can get right into, um, the PowerPoint. And we'll start with the, um, presentation. If I can get it up here. Are you seeing, are you seeing anything? On my screen?
It says that you started, but we don't see anything.
Okay.
Do you want to try sharing again?
Yeah, why don't I try that? I'll stop sharing, and I'll start it again. Okay, here we go. Now, it should be on here. Still not on here?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Let me try something else. Oh darn it. Let's see. Um, I just had it up. I'm, I apologize. Why isn't it going?
You could try emailing it. Uh, we could have you email it, and then perhaps have Dr. McGregor share it, his, if you can't get it up. You can continue right up.
It says it's paused, and I am not certain why it's paused. Um, resume, okay, let's see if this works. I've not had this happen before, where, where it says that it's paused. And now I say resume, share.
Barb, I'm wondering if it's something in our settings. I don't know if Brad. Are you sharing the correct screen? Is it like the green, um, line around your, the screen that you're sharing?
Really? Okay. Uh, Brad, are you still there?
Yeah, I'm here.
I can look at, yeah, participants, am I?
She's having trouble. It says, we can see that it says Louise Blankenheim has started screen sharing, so it shouldn't be an issue.
But it, it says Brad is the host and Barb is the co-host.
Okay.
Right, you, you have permissions to screen share.
Okay. Well, I'm not, it's not coming up for me. Don't lie, I'm sorry.
You know what, Louise, I'm, I'm looking at mine too, so can you try it one more time? Go ahead. Go back out and come back in with your screen sharing.
Okay. And I, it's on the PowerPoint. It's pausing, it keeps pausing on me. I don't know why. I wonder if I could do a new share. Let's see if I can do a new share. Hmm.
Is it a PowerPoint, Louise?
Yeah.
Okay, just send it to me in my email, and I'll, I'll pick it up.
Okay. Hmm, I don't know why, it's, it just wasn't. Not working for me.
That's weird.
Yeah.
Yeah, it might be a technology, uh, wonderful day, because also having trouble getting on, on YouTube is virtually nonexistent. We never have trouble with that.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm waiting for the email.
Barbara Osborne, okay.
I'm gonna pause the meeting recording here for a sec.
Yeah. I'm so sorry. I have this all set.
Louise, just take, take a breath, it's, I'm sure it's not on you. Mercury is definitely making his stern around, and I never have a share screen option, and it shows it for me too, so there might be something on our, on our end.
Okay.
Uh, when she was having problems, I enabled everyone the ability to share a screen, just in case that was the thing.
Soup. Okay.
Thanks, Brad.
Mm-hmm. I'm finding it. Here it is. Okay, Barb, it should be coming your way.
Okay, I'll refresh.
Not yet.
Yep, I see it, one second. Yep, I'm downloading it.
Now we know how the teachers and students felt all year long, right? With some of them.
It has been forever since I opened a PowerPoint. Okay, here we go.
Alright. Can you hit the displays? Because you probably see my, excuse me. But do you see the notes on the side, or do you see the full screen?
We saw, I thought I saw a note.
You should see the full screen. There we go. Oh, thank you. Well, we know that's a superintendent evaluation framework, so I'm, can you go to the next slide, please, Barb? So our session goals tonight, I want to familiarize, um, the board and the superintendent with the concepts.
Louise, we should get started with the recording.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're good, thank you.
Okay, wonderful. So our session goals then tonight is to familiarize the board and superintendent with the concepts of our framework. And then I'm going to go into the framework and show you how it works. And then we will respond to questions, but as I said earlier, if you have any questions throughout the session, just go ahead and, and, um, raise your hand, or just let me know. So, next slide, please. So the purposes of this evaluation, now, we're gonna talk a little bit about that, but, um, I know Dr. Jenkins, uh, said that you've done a lot of different evaluations, but this is the first time this, you and, and the board that you are currently working with have, um, had the evaluation. So can you please share some of the perspectives on your current evaluation system? Do you do a couple times a year? Is it just annually? Can anyone just share a little bit of what you're currently doing?
Yeah, so I think it would be relevant to say that actually the vast majority of the board, so six of us, haven't done a superintendent evaluation in the past, um, because we have been recently elected or elected within the last cycle, with the exception of Nikki Vandermeulen, who is our expert. But we, in looking at kind of the history of the organization, have a pattern of doing two evaluations a year, a formative evaluation and a summative evaluation, and Nikki, correct me if I get anything wrong.
You are absolutely correct.
That's great. Okay, that's wonderful, and I, I just wanted to get a sense of, of where you're at, because that's exactly what we would recommend, that you do a formative and then a summative at the end. So, next slide, please. So the purpose is, um, what we see at WSB is this evaluation is an opportunity to really build a strong partnership between the superintendent and the board. And it's going to be based on your mutual goals that you have, and then, of course, the understanding of each other's roles. So you want to focus on, um, achievement, and you want to focus on data, because an effective governance leadership team is predicated on the need for that strong partnership. And the partnership should be based on these, this mutual respect, and then the understanding of your differing roles. Obviously, your roles are going to overlap some, but there's some great specificity between what the superintendent does and what the board does. And we'll talk a little bit about that, um, as we go forward. So, next slide, please. So the evaluation requirements, uh, you may not be aware, but legally, you have a requirement as a school board to evaluate the superintendent. And what the, uh, law says is it's every three years, but we would recommend annually at least once a year to do it. And within these legal requirements, you, you would base it on your standards for educational leadership, and we're gonna talk specifically about those once we get into the tool. Your current job description should be a part of this evaluation. And then, when we're gonna talk a little bit about observations by the board, so that we can go through a very objective type of evaluation, it will also include some artifacts from the superintendent, so that you can, um, that he can share all the work that he's been doing and provide evidence of meeting the goal, uh, that you're, that you've mutually agreed upon. So, and then you probably have board adopted evaluation policies, and this would, would, um, align with the requirements for that. So, next slide. So the background and the overview of this framework, it was developed internally by, uh, WSB consultants, who are retired superintendents that have worked in other states besides Wisconsin, and then our legal counsel. We were all involved in developing this, and it is, uh, what we found out is there are a lot of boards across Wisconsin that are doing evaluations or not doing evaluations, because they don't have a decent tool to use. So we felt that it was really important, since we work with boards, that we develop something that is user-friendly and that would align with the legal requirements, as well as, um, your goals and, and building that partnership. So it's really designed to be a collaborative conversation around leadership and providing feedback on growth. And we have the leadership standards, and then you would meet those legal requirements. And I said earlier about being objective, because so often people get into evaluations and they become, uh, very objective, maybe an opinion, or maybe a feeling that you have, whereas this one is going to be aligned with standards and rubrics that align with those standards, and, um, to, to set out the goals that, that you would like to, um, see your superintendent perform. So, next slide. So the features of the framework, it's all about continuous growth and it's about support. It is not a tool, um, just a gotcha tool, by any means. This is really about growth, and it's about providing timely and constructive feedback. It's about focusing on data that you have. And then the other thing that's unique about this one is we differentiate between a first-year superintendent and a second-year and beyond superintendent. So I won't spend a ton of time on the first-year superintendent part tonight, obviously, because Dr. Jenkins is, is an experienced superintendent. And, um, I think that going into the standards-based framework and rubrics would be more valuable for your time tonight. So, uh, we want to make sure that the timeliness of your, of your evaluation is, is going to inform some decisions, for instance, a contract extension, a retention, or ongoing development that you're wanting, uh, for you, for your superintendent. So, next slide. Again, it's the, the, conceptually, it's really about a collaborative process involving the full board, and the full board coming to consensus on, on the finished product. Again, the growth and development of the superintendent, and then it's designed to differ, uh, just what I, what I said about between the first years and the second years. So those are the big concepts. Next slide. So the first-year superintendent, and I'll show you this in a minute, but the first-year superintendent is based on prompts and questions. Um, there's so many, um, things that a new superintendent coming into a district needs to do, needs to get acclimated to, to the district, and get acclimated to their job description. They may have had an entry plan for, for the board that they want to have evaluated, and then the professional development plan. So it's a list of about ten prompts. It becomes a narrative at that point and a discussion, but we all, we say that we, you narrow it, because the thing about this evaluation is we want to focus, there's so many responsibilities that a superintendent has, and you can't just, you can't evaluate appropriately on every single task that a superintendent has to do. Um, so we want to, we'll have you narrow down to some very specific areas as we get into the, the framework. So, next slide. Again, the first year, uh, I think we can go on, uh, unless somebody has questions on the first-year superintendent. Are we ready to, just to skip over this one? Let's do that. Let's skip over this, and this one again.
Louise, I have a question.
Sure.
I guess for the first-year superintendent, is it, do you mean first year for someone who has never been a superintendent before, or first year in your district?
Well, it's basically for a first-year person, uh, of superintendent who has never been a superintendent before. But some districts, because they have a new superintendent and they never worked together, they, they've opted to, to start the evaluation process using the first-year superintendent prompts. And, and it's because, and because they have not done, uh, formally evaluation of the superintendent, you know, I mean, it certainly is an option that you can consider, and as we go through the framework, uh, you can have a further discussion. Nikki, you have your hand up.
It might be easier, as I'm the only one who's gone through it, to go through the basic prompts, because I will be there virtually, the others will be there in person, and I just think it might be easier, because then we can see something.
Okay.
See how to do it.
Yeah, so, once we get to the framework.
It's up to you guys.
Well, how about we, we revisit this, this discussion as, as I go through, and then you'll know the difference between the two, and their, your comfort level between the two.
That works. Is that okay, Ali?
Okay. Next slide. So this is beyond the first year, um, and it's the same concepts about the job description and the professional standards for educational leaders. It's based on the 2015 educational leader standards. And then specific goals that you have. You may have a strategic plan. You may have some district, uh, building goals. You may have a referendum coming up. These are all specific goals that you have in, in line, or, uh, in mind for your superintendent. There are several different standards, as you will see, but we are going to recommend that you choose three. You choose three of the standards, and then the indicators. And then performance indicators are decided upon the superintendent and the board together. So sometimes, uh, superintendents will come in and tell the board, these are my goals for this year, which is totally fine, i- if that's the route you want to take. The other one is, uh, what we see, find very powerful, is to talk about what are the goals and talk about them together. Um, you may have something in mind that, um, the soup, a goal that, for the superintendent, and maybe this, uh, Dr. Jenkins has been doing this, and you weren't aware of it. So it's really important that you do have a mutual understanding of what standards you want to evaluate on. And then the, the other thing, when you have your annual, um, evaluation, it's a good time to have that discussion to, to set those goals for the following evaluation year. For instance, if you have your eval, your summative at the end of the year in Ju- June, then you want to have a conversation about your goals for the next year, because then it starts in July again. So, um, you want to make sure that it's very aligned with goals and the strengths areas and the areas of development for the board, I mean, for the superintendent. So you want to hit the next slide, please?
Louise, uh, let me just say, everyone, if we could, bookmark this particular slide. This is so critical in the work. Wherever we start, this slide, having a great understanding of it is important. So let's bookmark this, and when we start our discussions later on, we'll probably want to come back to it, Louise, uh, on it. Because the tenses matter, not during, that is, this is prior to, this should be happening right here. So go ahead.
Yeah, definitely. Um, this ongoing, are you talking about this slide, Dr. Jenkins?
Yeah, the one you were just on, in terms of how we set it up and how we do it collaboratively upfront.
Oh, yeah.
The standards collaboratively, or however the board chooses if they wanted me to do it on my own or whatever like that. But for each year, we need to sit down ahead of time to have this.
Yes, that's very important, and we feel that that's just a main, uh, a main, uh, component of our evaluation system, that this is done together. And, 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 and you could even have a separate planning if you need, uh, to do that. So a planning, uh, to have in the beginning of the, of the year, uh, but like I said, you could do it at the, at the end of your summative evaluation. And you do the formative, which is mid-year, and the summative in, in July. One of the things that you may not be aware of, or you, you are, but contracts, uh, renewal need to, the superintendent needs to be notified before the end of January that they, you're going to extend the contract. So this is a time when people, uh, boards feel it's really important to do a mid-year eval, which is in January. Now, I would say the majority of people do their formative or their mid-year eval in January, and they do their, and their summative, their final one in June or July. Uh, some districts do the, the beginning of June or July where they set their goals, and then they'll do the summative in January before the, before the, um, contract recommendation is due. But we find that it's really, um, a good thing to do the formative in January, and then the, the summative in June or July after the school year, after you've got all the data from your student, um, performance and things like that. So, next slide, please. And so I'm going to be showing you this, uh, your ten standards, performance indicators. These are the things I want you to look for as I go into it. Um, there's going to be, there's two different standards, or, I mean, they're both the same standards, but there's going to be standards for the, the superintendent, and, and the same standards are going to be for the board, because you're both going, the, the, Dr. Jenkins would be doing a self-eval on the standards, and then the board would also be doing their standard, uh, their evaluation. It's rubric-based, and, um, this is where the conversation comes in, and I think it'll be clear as we get in. I think the next slide, I should be able to get into the, the, uh, I talked about goals and artifacts, the observation. Now, when we talk about board observation, that doesn't mean you have to set up an observation and follow Dr. Jenkins around the district. It really means when you see him, um, for instance, at board meetings or events, or, um, any kind of retreats you might have, or how they, how he communicates with, with your constituents and your students. Those are the types of observations that you would be looking for. It's not one that, like a classroom observation, where you would go in and watch him run a meeting or something like that. Um, so it's a real, it's a consensus view. So what happens is, Dr. Jenkins would do his self-eval on the standards and the goals that you have chosen. The board, each individually, would do that, that standard, uh, the, complete the evaluation on those standards. However, as a board, you're going to want to come to consensus on what you present to Dr. Jenkins, so that, um, it's not seven different evaluations. Uh, so you're gonna have to have a conversation about, um, or even look at some of the rubrics and say, well, somebody, uh, scored a four, and someone scored him a one. You know, you, you might have to have, you know, a strong conversation with evidence. You know, you, you might have to have, you know, a strong conversation, uh, with evidence provided. And, and come to consensus on, on that score. Now, outlying, um, or outlier opinions can be put in or outline con- comments can be put in. It can be talked about at the end of the, the, the summative evaluation. However, it shouldn't, it's not really part of the evaluation narrative that would go into the, into the file. So you can, um, go to the next slide, please. And if you, you're, you're asking questions along the way, but does anybody have any questions on the concepts of the, of evaluation? Okay, next slide.
I'm sorry, I was just going to ask.
Yeah.
When you're kind of customizing an evaluation to the unique environment created by the pandemic. And you're talking about something like observations of a superintendent's, uh, you know. Interactions with the public, which would look very different for all of us as board members and would also look very different. For a superintendent outside of this context. So it's hard to kind of compare to what the normative expectation would be. How are you advising folks to take that into consideration?
I think that's a, an excellent question because this, this year is as unique as it could, if you could have it. And that's another reason why we say that to do an annual evaluation. Because things do change year to year. And this is a prime example of how things have, have really shifted. In looking at different, uh, uh, different things. So when you look at the, the, the standards and the indicators. You would come up with goals that you feel are appropriate. So, and so that you would say, oh, this is a very unique year. What do we really want to make sure that happens? So we have a successful year. So maybe it might be, uh, the, the technology infrastructure that there. Or, uh, the communication piece on, um, the COVID updates, you know, are, are you. Com- communicating enough to our, our community and our parents about what's going on? Um, it may be that some types of communication reach out to, to families and things like that. Um, so I, that's an excellent question and, uh, one of the reasons why you do have to have a conversation. And, and if, for instance, now, when this did shift, you probably had some different goals set. And then in March, it total, it totally blew them out of the water because you all went to virtual. At this point in time, there's nothing wrong with, with having that meeting and saying. You know, we, we need to look, uh, something different for our evaluation. And, and what should it look like now this year? Because you, you'd have, what, a half a year, uh, to evaluate. Um, does that make sense?
Yeah, I think that's, uh, incredibly helpful and I think it is useful to really think about how this year is distinct. And what, um, you know, how that shifts what an expectation looks like at this time.
Very, very true.
Thank you for speaking to that.
Sure. So next, next one. Do we go onto legal requirements? So we can go, let's go right into the next slide. I think that's where we, where we have our. Next one. Okay, so this is your, the first year superintendent that we did talk about. And, um, it really, if, if you're interested in the first year, you would do that one formative again. And then this, the summative, which is more formal. And then you just have those conversations about what prompts that you want to use. And check in on them in January and then check in on them in, in June and July. So go ahead, next slide. Next slide then, same, same thing. Uh, this is the summative evaluation, uh, you, um. In one month before the summative and, or before the summative is scheduled, the superintendent would provide the board with. You, the outlines of the first year of his accomplishments. And then any written responses to the set of prompts that you want and any artifacts that support those accomplishments. Okay, next slide. So you complete those and then you have your personal ops, this is for the board now, your responsibility as the board. You'd complete the responses to the prompts. You use your personal observations during your conversation. You use any stakeholder feedback that you have. Uh, and be, um, thinking of stakeholder feedback, I just want to say. That it's important to look at patterns of that stakeholder feedback. You may have one or two people that come to you with either concern or even praise. Um, for, for a specific situation, how it was handled. It's really important feedback for you to have. But you have to make a, a judgment to call to see, does this have enough, um, information? Have I observed this? Have I heard enough about this to make it, um, a viable input in this, in the evaluation? So you want to validate any of the other sources that you have. Okay, next slide. Um, you would, the board duties and you would assemble that summary report. That means you're going to talk about those prompts. And I see you sitting down at the meeting and you talk about the prompts and someone would, you know, dictate. Uh, and then put it into a narrative form of feedback and constructive su- uh, support for the superintendent. And then you can convene a special meeting to review those responses after you've talked with. Um, Dr. Jenkins and then a final document, um, should be developed. And explained to the superintendent during that summative meeting. Okay, next question, or next slide. And this talks about your superintendent goals, the ones that are suggested, it's student achievement, district improvement. Uh, leadership or any other prompts or goals that you have. Uh, SMART goals are very much suggested and you'll see samples of those within the framework. Okay, next slide. And next one. So, has it gone there? Okay. Again, now the first year beyond, it's a recommended annual evaluation. The two meetings, beginning of the year, you can set that goal up or set up those meetings. And then again, you use these, uh, objective measures, the student achievement, district. District-wide improvement, superintendent leadership development, and then obviously based on the standards. Okay, next slide. I talked about that already. I think I'm going to go right into the rubric, I mean, right into the, the tool. Um, am I able to share the screen yet? Um. Am I able to get it and possibly share my screen?
Sure. Do you want me to stop the PowerPoint?
Yeah, let's see if we can stop it and then, um.
Go ahead.
Okay, because I want to get into sharing the, um. I want to get into sharing the, um. This framework, so you know what I'm talking about. Because I'm a visual learner and I will need this. Okay. So once you go on to the, can you see my screen?
Can see your desktop, Louise.
Can you see my screen right now?
We, we can see your desktop, someone running in this beautiful water and mountains.
But here it says, it, so you're not seeing the first page of the superintendent framework?
No, we're seeing a woman running in the water.
All right, let me try that again. Boy, I am so sorry. All right, now let's. Is that there?
Yep.
Do you have it now?
Framework, yes.
Yay! Okay, we are in the WASB website now. And some of you may have had an opportunity to go in here. But if you go into services and, and then you go to customized leadership. And, uh, then over there to organizational consulting. And then you go to the superintendent framework and then pr- click there and that's where it, this will lead you. So. Here we are in the superintendent evaluation framework. Now you've all purchased it. And I think Barb got you all in as a login in here. So then you would access the framework by pressing that button. And you log in, your username and password that you could probably save on there if you're comfortable doing that. And then you log in. And it's running. How many of you have had an opportunity to dig through the, the framework at all? Anybody? Okay, okay, great. Okay, so I talked about the, the purpose of the framework, those, the requirements that we talked about. And the minimum evaluation requirements. But if you go in here and you press this plus. It's going to show you the background and the purpose of the evaluation. And for time's sake, I'm not going to go through that, but I just wanted to show you how you can scroll through these. Uh, and get more information. So the evaluation concepts that we talked about, first year superintendents. So here's the, there, we talk the step-by-step on what to do with the first year superintendent. And then here are the prompts and the questions. So if you decide, when, when we, when I get through with it. And you want to do possibly a prompt. Uh, then these are some of the questions that, that you would have. Now let's think of the past year and COVID. Uh, you know, has, has a superintendent demonstrated efforts to be visible in the school? Well, that, that wouldn't pertain right now, okay? But have you demonstrated meaningful engagement and work to gain trust of the staff members in the community? Demonstrated efforts to strengthen the leadership team. Provided effective leadership, addressing school board approved improvement plans and things like that. So these are the ten questions. And as a board and, and superintendent, you, if you decided to go this route, you'd pick around about three questions. It to, the, the thing about this evaluation tool, we want to make it rea- reasonable. We do, we want it to be meaningful and very specific. So you'd pick about three to four questions at the most, uh, on this one. And then you would have, this is a sample of a narrative document that you could develop. Um, so you're going to have your synopsis and the over, overview of the year. Any strengths that you are, can be referenced in the prompts and questions. Any areas of focus or improvement. And then your goals for the following year and then the signature date. And then this would be a sample of what would go into the superintendent's personnel file. So that's, that's something that, that you could look at. Appendix D then goes into the, um, beyond the first year. And when we talk about this, the, the same concepts, concept that we talked about earlier. Now here's where the rubrics are and this is where your, your, um. Your great, your, uh, scoring would be. So this is the self-inse- self-assessment of the superintendent. So, and this is where Dr. Jenkins would go in. And the self-assessment of the superintendent leadership standard. These are the leadership standards. And within the leadership standards then, there are these indicators. I'm going into those now. So let's say you picked ethics and professional norms. For your, your goals. And you wanted to do all of the indicators. Okay, so there's seven indicators under that standard that you want to score. So, if you notice here, this is I act ethically. This is where the superintendent goes in and, and he would score here. You know, you, there's a plus or a minus and you have a rating score of one, two, three or four. Point being, one point is ineffective or minimal. To four points was as highly effective and distinguished leadership, okay? So, you as, as a, an individual or Dr. Jenkins. You would, as an individual, complete this. And then you would share that with your board when it comes time for your evaluation. So now, I mean, if we go back and we can get into, um, the, what the board does. You will see that this one, under ethics and professional norms. It's going to be the same thing, except that you would be scoring the superintendent. So instead of saying I, it says the superintendent acts ethically and professional. And then you have a limit of three hundred characters for your response. And we do recommend that you provide some type of, of narrative. So that when you get together as a full board, that you have some, some recommended data. Or some evidence or some observations that you have seen. So again, when I talked about observations, here's where you might want to write down, um. Saw he, you know, we had a very difficult board meeting and Dr. Jenkins. Uh, held himself professionally and, and was, um, you know, showed very good leadership skills. You know, something like that. So these are, these are all your rubrics. And this is where the majority of your work will happen when you start, when you do the actual, um. Evaluation. Again, you, you pick as, together. Which standards you want to go through. And then you can also pick if you want to do all the indicators, just a couple of the indicators. That's why it's so important to have that discussion together. So that you can, um, make sure that, that you are all on the same page. Now, one of the things that's really important here is we wanted to highlight that. It is that your leadership is aligned with your current job description. Um, I, I have to say, not every district has, has a very current job description. Um, so, I mean, you'd have to look at yours to see, is it relevant, is it current? Um, Dr. Jenkins is, is fairly new to Madison, so you might have, um, updated it. Or talked with him about that. Uh, so this is where it shows if it's going to be, uh, consistent with the job description. And you can put, you know, one, two, three or four with, with that, whichever, whichever goals that, that align. So, are there any, um, questions about this so far? Now, appendix G is going to be your sample performance narrative. Because you won't, you will not take all of the board's evaluations. And put them in a personnel file. What you do is you come up with a consistent, uh, consensus eval. And it's a sample annual performance res- uh, similar to the first year superintendent. One, uh, thing that we do recommend is that you print off a PDF of the evaluation. And, um, the summative evaluation and complete that. Um, that consensus evaluation and staple that to, to the, to, um, your narrative. And then that's what would go into the personnel file. Okay. So appendix H goes into superintendent goals. This just talks about all the goals that you have, specific, um, action plans or target dates. Uh, what you want to consider for goal setting. And this, again, you do that at either a planning meeting at the end of the. And this, again, you do that at either a planning meeting at the end of the summative evaluation. This is a list of all the professional standards that, that are listed in the statute. A job description audit tool, we can help you with your job description, but this is a tool that you can certainly look at and to see if you can change or revise or update your job description. And then this is some sample artifacts that the superintendent can provide. Now, you wouldn't have to provide, Dr. Jenkins doesn't have to provide an artifact for every single indicator. He may want to pick one or two to share with you during the summative meeting. But it's important that board has the observation and that, and the artifacts are shared as well because this, this provides evidence, and this provides a good discussion point and conversation point for the, the goals that you have established together. And these are just some, some things you could, you could provide. Dr. Jenkins' sample written communications, administrative team meeting agendas, and growth goals for administrators. It's just a list of several sample artifacts that you could use with the tool.
Louise, I have a quick little question.
Yeah.
This is Barb. Sorry. Is there anyone who was able to go into this and fill this out and, and, and put their, their scores in and everything, and then download that? Or how do we access that?
Yes. No, you, what you have to do is you go in, let's go back to the, the rubrics. You would go in and complete them, and then you're going to, then you would want to print it out. You, you should print it out as a PDF because once you go out of the, here it says important. Be sure to do a Ctrl+P your file print to make a PDF document of your form. Because if you, you don't have to post it, but once you go out of the framework, all of your data will be gone. So you want to make sure that you complete it all, and then do a PDF and print it out.
Thank you.
Yeah, good question. You can also print out a, just a blank one for that summative or that consensus meeting one. So that, because there's not a way to compile, right now we don't have electronically discovered a way to compile all of the, the board's data. This is more done through a conversation and maybe averaging some of the scores for the points, but then that would be done manually. Does that make sense? Did I lose anybody yet? Okay. You know, these are, this is the, the highlights of this. I don't, unless you want me to go into more specific things. Really, it's very user-friendly. If you, you press on a standard, you find what indicators are. You determine what, what ones you want to use. You set up some opportunity for observation. Dr. Jenkins would set up his artifacts. And then you, you have a conversation. You have one in January, and you have one at the end of the year. And I don't want to confuse you, this is a summative. All doing the scoring like this is your summative evaluation. So determine, if you determine that June or July is your summative eval, this is when you would do that. And again, then Dr. Jenkins would do his part a month before. I went back to, to that one. So the self-assessment, then Dr. Jenkins, you would do a month before. And then you bring that to, to the board, or you give that to the board for their, their feedback. But it's really important that you come together and then you talk about it. That's the power of this evaluation, that you can really have a good discussion, a collaborative discussion.
So I have a question about state law.
Yeah.
I believe that the state statutes say that superintendents have to be evaluated at the end of their first year, and then every three years after that. And so the end of Dr. Jenkins' first year is mid-July. So we're actually coming up on that fairly soon. How rigid is the law about? Do you have to do a formative evaluation, like before July 13th or summative?
Oh, no, I, I, it's, that would be up to you. And I think that if you had your summative in July, you'll be fine. As long as you, you, you have a conversation, you meet, and then you, you would be fine meeting the law that way.
Yeah, let me just, let me make sure we're clear though. Chris, just a correction. I started contracting with the district in July officially. It was August when I started with the district. I was transitioning in in the month of July.
Right, yeah, the contract is in July, but you're right. You did transition in August.
So you guys have more time. That's all that, that's the only reason I said that.
So do you have any thoughts about, now that you've seen the tool, is, is it more appropriate to do the, the prompts and questions? Or is it maybe this year? I don't, do you have goals set since August? Do you have anything that you're being evaluated on this year?
So we definitely have an entry plan available to us that was provided by Dr. Jenkins when he interviewed for his position with the district. And then I think, you know, looking to the, the specific goals of this year. For me, I think both tools are relevant, so I'm interested in what other board members think about looking at kind of that first year outline versus the, the more in-depth. Yeah, configuration of questions.
Ali, I.
Yes.
I would go with the prompts because this isn't a normal year. Normally, I think we could do a deeper dive into Dr. Jenkins' performance, but you can't grade someone's performance on something that wasn't possible, and he couldn't go into a lot of the schools. He couldn't meet with a lot of the parents. He did very well considering everything that was going on. But because of that, I think using this, the first year form might be easier because going in-depth really isn't as possible with the COVID being such an issue.
Did other board members want to contribute to kind of looking at the tools available, available and approach available, and what kind of spoke to them most concretely? Or Dr. Jenkins, did you want to speak to the tools?
Yes, I think how you introduced it, Louise, is just a framework because we haven't done this, and just being really frank with board members, it takes a couple of times to really calibrate together to get to a really good document. And we have to say, what is the real goal? We know that we came in, and I was going to ask you, Louise, did you guys do this prior to the pandemic or during the pandemic in terms of this tool itself? And did it make allowances for the fact, this was a pivoting year, right? We did a lot of, go ahead.
Oh, this was done, the work on it was done before the pandemic. So one of the things I would, I would have you consider is that you, you look at Dr. Jenkins' entry, entry plan and, and have a conversation in, at the end of this year, and then set some goals from this framework for next year.
Yeah, and that's.
So that you could start fresh from that, from there.
But at the same time, I provided the board with a narrative based upon, as we say, my entry plan coming in, and the things that we knew that we had to try to get done, and just gave some narratives about the various standards too that we have. And you guys should have that now, right? All of you have it? Okay.
That's a really good idea, yeah. I mean, you've got that, to base it off that entry plan, and then have your conversation and your narrative. And at the same meeting then, take a look at the tool and decide what's going to be pertinent for this coming year.
Mm-hmm, exactly. So that's what I had to say though, Ali, with that. And I think that's going to lend itself for a great conversation because it's still trying to align it to the standards, not try to actually align it with the standards and provide your artifacts. But when I also went through this too, this is a lot of information for the board to try to get. And that's why it's a framework, you don't do the whole thing. And what I've done with boards in the past, what we've done together, is say how much of this, and when you set the three goals out of this, because if you try to do 10 goals, oh, that's, that's very ambitious. But can you really get into depth with, and move the district?
Yeah. That's, that's really very important, Dr. Jenkins, that, that we don't make this so overwhelming. You know, WASB a few years back had a tool, a superintendent evaluation tool. And the feedback we got was it was just, it was so comprehensive and so complex that boards felt, it was, they were overwhelmed with it. And that's the one thing, you don't want to be overwhelmed. You, you pick your, your top two, three priorities, align them with the standards, and then do a really thorough job on those three things because this, yeah, you, if you did all 10, it would be so, it would, it just would be too much, way too much.
Yeah, I, I also really appreciate that you spoke to the difference between objective and subjective measurements, right? What are the measurements that we have data and resources to support? And that, to me, does kind of cue some of the timing we would want around evaluation because we want to be able to both examine the performance of the superintendent while, you know, looking at relatively concrete information. Are there other board members who wanted to speak to the tool?
Yeah, I'd like to chime in.
Thank you, Chris.
So my understanding of the process is we'd be doing probably just a formative conversation before August. And then we'd be looking at a summative evaluation probably January at the earliest, unless we decided to postpone summative until next June and do two formative conversations, which I guess would be an option as well. So technically, we wouldn't, we weren't going to be launching directly into using the scoring mechanism. Is that correct? I think when we're doing the formative conversation, it really is just a conversation. Did I get that right?
Yeah, I think the thing is, is that we want to get to the place of summative evaluation before the end of the first year, so before. So looking to kind of this.
Correct, we're trying to get this by August.
Yes, so looking at this kind of initial conversation as what tools are we going to use? How do we want to use them? And having that formative conversation now, and then moving into our, our August conversation, and then setting up the cadence so that we're really doing that formative conversation in January, so that we're getting into kind of that, you know, that, that, the time period and cycle that's most recommended, but also that benefits us, I think, to the greatest extent as a board. Or at least that's what I, I'm committed to at this point, unless I hear board members wanting to navigate this differently, or Dr. Jenkins wanting to navigate this differently.
In that case, I would opt for staying open to different possible tools. I think that's something we should probably try to navigate together. On, on one hand, we're in the middle of COVID, and on the other hand, Dr. Jenkins is a really experienced superintendent. And so I think we need to have a conversation together about which standards make the most sense to use at this point. So I wouldn't close off the, you know, the beyond first year standards because they may actually turn out to be the most appropriate for evaluating what Dr. Jenkins has done over his first year or so in the district, so.
Thank you for speaking to that, Chris. Are there other board members who'd like to contribute to this portion of the conversation?
All right, Ali, I don't know if you can see my hand.
No, I can't see you, but I'm glad you chimed in.
Okay. Um, so I just wanted to understand the, the tool a little bit more in regards to the flexibility, because I do agree with Chris Carusi around the needs for flexibility. Now, is the need for flexibility is around also like editing the language as written as well? Or just adding things? How does that, how does that work?
Within the tool, are you asking to, to edit within the tool?
Mm-hmm.
You wouldn't be able to edit within the tool. But you could, for instance, like this year, since you've had a unique year, if you wanted to go look at some of these questions, and then customize them to this year, you know, then that's, then you could do a narrative from that. But you wouldn't be able to go in, but this, you don't score the rubrics in this one anyway. So you, you, it was be, you'd have your prompt, you know? So for instance, has the superintendent demonstrated flexibility and sound decision-making skills when addressing unexpected circumstances affecting the school district? Well, COVID was really unexpected circumstance, right? So this would be a prompt that you could use. And then each of you come up with your thoughts, and then come together again as a board and decide what it is you want to share with Dr. Jenkins.
Yeah, thank you so much for walking us through that. I think I'm specifically thinking about, one of the goals for the district is to be, is to be and become an anti-racist district. So I do want to have a question specifically about that, and I'm sure your tool does not have that question. So where will we ask that question in either scenarios that Ali had proposed for us?
Where would you ask that question? That could be a question that, so do you, is that, that's a goal of the district, correct? And you could, I mean, you could ask that question. What progress have we made toward being an anti-racist district? And then Dr. Jenkins could speak to that. And you as a board could speak to that as well, that, you know, you, you feel that this isn't, that this is an area where we've improved, but this is a, a goal that might be ongoing. And that, that's a huge goal, and it's a, it's a very good goal, but it's one of those that is going to be, it's, it's not going to be done in one year. You know, there's going to be progress toward that and work toward that. So you may want to say, for instance, with a SMART goal, you would want to put a timeline on it, so say bye.
I think I'm asking specifically, so my understanding is that, yes, we can add questions that outside of the framework.
Oh, sure.
Uh, so, and in either the scenarios that Ali had proposed, right? Whether it's the first year or the, you know, other standards, more veteran standards, we could add specific questions that are outside of that.
Goals, sure, because that's one of your goals. So then with your goal, you probably want to go into the year beyond because then you could align it with a standard.
Hmm, okay. And then my second comment was maybe either for Ali or Dr., well, Louise, you know, if you, if you know or want to chime in, or Dr. Jenkins, in regards to, to this example where we are coming up with questions that speak directly to our school district goals or our board intentions, how, is there something that is done like between the body of seven people? Is that something that's done from the executive officers? How does that get crafted?
The narrative? Or the summative?
Yeah, the questions outside of what this tool's already providing.
That would be, and, and anybody could chime in, but I would say that would be the conversation that you would have as a board and superintendent. And then you determine what questions you would, you would want to assess.
Yeah, and I do think we're taking space within our retreat to, to and navigate kind of those very specific things. I do think coming to consensus as a group around how to do this is just going to take a little bit more time than. Um around how to do this is just going to take a little bit more time than this training, which is why we're giving it. Um I I want to say about three hours during the retreat. Um that and that'll be consolidated for for board members, you know, among board members. So that'll really be our conversation around how we want to do this and how we want to work with Dr. Jenkins to do this as as. The eight of us kind of sit down. Chris Gomishmit, I see your hand. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Um I I was just what what struck me is how we're going to get on a cadence, like you said, of of doing this. On a regular basis. And what struck me was when we're looking at the beyond first year. Standards and performance indicators is selecting it in advance. Um and it and it goes with the summative one from the year before. So I'm kind of looking at it as. When we're going to do a reset to do the next one. Um how do we set that up in the summative one that we're going to do this summer, right? And and so what are the? The two that we're going to look at this year, those are going to be much simpler and much um more, I think of that that narrative. Form like we suggested, just because we haven't set out. The indicators in advance um this year besides, you know, the entry plan and. Um so we haven't done that collaboratively with Dr. Jenkins yet. Um and I'm looking forward to doing that. And so. Um I guess, Ali, if you, I guess, just to clarify, see us coming together for the retreat to do. Part of this work and make some decisions on that and then coming back in the summer. To do whatever on on the more substantial goals for the next round, is that?
Yeah, so Chris, you're breaking up a little bit, but I.
Okay.
They're asking and and I I think this is kind of a point I'm trying to reiterate is that we're really coming together. Together to create the foundation we need to move forward, right? And so whatever that is, whatever the indicators are within this year's summative evaluation. That are going to carry us through next year, we're going to determine that as a group collaboratively so that. It's everybody's voice at the table um being, you know, being part of that conversation, but also having a say in what that conversation. Looks like. Um and then I think, you know, because we haven't had kind of a a. Uh ways of working in terms of evaluations, establishing that is is going to be what we spend a lot of time. Um around in terms of the formative.
I'm just gonna outweigh in the page I said to bookmark. This is that discussion I was talking about. Because in every valuation, every place I've ever been, particularly you have a number of people new. You have to go back to it and Louise, you said it out in terms of how this go and uh Ali is talking about the collaboration is right there. You have to collaborate on this whole process and uh I like the cadence which uh Ali you had thrown out in terms of let's finish this in August. And then come back with the formative in January, but what Chris also said, I think is important and we have to know this. This is one tool. There are many, uh but the question that was raised by uh Ananda, I think it's important for us. And Louise, we're a little bit different in Madison to be frank, when it comes to anti-racism. And you know, leading leaning in, I mean, we're not like talking about, we're trying to lean in. That doesn't become a part of our conversation, so we can explicitly. Have this discussion and have results, right? Like, what are we doing? Are we trying to make our staff aware? We're doing the professional development? I think it's ways that we can lean into it in terms of which ties right into our instruction and our climate. Culture and our buildings and things of this nature. So the language piece. I think as we go through this, I think this is excellent for us to go through. So you kind of get an idea. And then even if it's this, you know, you chop it up, you can't do all of this. I'm just going to tell you, you can't. It's going to take us doing this two, three, sometimes four times, because even if you have another board member come on, then you have to kind of like. Recalibrate where you are. Uh so I thank you, uh Louise, for bringing this out. But it's to it's for his board members. I don't want you guys starting to feel stressed because you can get overwhelmed.
Yeah.
We're trying to do this.
Yeah, I that's really important and and just know that. Um you know, you you get two hours of training with with the framework. And if there's an another time that you need. It maybe some guidance or talking about your goals or anything like that, we're here. Uh I mean, but you know, you. Dr. Jenkins, you've got a lot of experience with this and. And I think that you've got some great direction happening at Madison and some some good things going on. That you certainly could have uh enough to talk about and and to. Provide evidence on and then set some goals toward for, you know, years to come.
And I do want to say that we don't have kind of a a. An established process with Dr. Jenkins or as a board around evaluation. However, the vast majority of this board, six out of seven of us. Did participate in the interview process and the hiring of the superintendent. And so we know what we were looking for and what the conversation around that hiring process looked like. Um and we and we can use that as a guiding tool for, you know, how. How this year went and and what we're what we're looking for. And so I do really appreciate that kind of first year tool. In just talking about what is, you know, reflecting on kind of the entry plan and where we started. Um you know, if we go back to last August and go, there's a snapshot of where we are then. Um and what has happened since then is what is what we're taking into account. I think that. There's a a lot of of options for a very rich. Dialogue amongst board members. And Chris, I hope that speaks to what you were asking in terms of establishing that that process.
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Yeah, that's very well said, Ali, because you do have, you know what you were looking for at that time in August. And um you can finish out this year and then, you know, start fresh. In in setting your goals for for next year.
Yeah, and and one last thing I would say here, this is an opportunity to truly collaborate and that's reciprocal. Because just like even a superintendent, me coming in or any superintendent coming in, they know what they think they're getting into. And it's opportunity to really calibrate with your board members and, you know, you have some expectations yourself. And the board has expectations. And so it's a great time to collaborate about how do we communicate effectively? What we're both looking for. It's a marriage, bottom line. You have to want to be married. And if not, do you get a divorce? And everybody know you don't want to do that, you know, just go take one another out for coffee and makeup and do whatever you get.
Yes, may I suggest, having been through this process? If you go past three goals to even four, it will, it takes forever. If you go more than four, because we've tried it. Uh DJ suggested, we tried it. May I just suggest, don't. It ended up taking twice as long. It didn't get the answers it was needed. And frankly, it ended up being a lot more confusing that time. So just giving you a tip of someone who's done it. Along with Dr. Jenkins, who obviously has gone through the process many times, not trying to be a know-it-all here, I'm just.
Did you say four questions? Is that what you said?
Pick no more than four.
Okay.
Pick no more than four.
I see a heart emoji.
Loving Nicky for saying that. I've been through it. It breaks down after so much time in a room together. It does. It is not even about the evaluation anymore. It's like, how can I get out of this room, you know?
I want to acknowledge Savian's hand and Maya's hand. And Nikki, thank you so much for that feedback. I actually have a a question that I would direct. At you, um but I'll I'll ask that question after Savian, I get a chance to speak. Savian?
Thank you. Um yeah, Nikki, I completely agree with keeping it uh down to three. Um because it forces us to be concise and focused. Um and I already have the wheels turning in terms of, you know, as a whole board, we have really. Coalesced on three big things during our time together. So I'm totally in agreement with three.
Thank you so much, Savian and Maya.
Yes, so I was just thinking, um so once we get our bases and our foundation together and we get into our routines. Um and this is just kind of a hypothetical question. If Dr. Jenkins decides to stay on, say he's here for like twelve years and we're doing it maybe every year or every three years or however we determine. How frequently we want, um is a reevaluation of um the evaluation ever happening? So. Um say he has met some of these goals or some of the goals no longer um. Are our objective for for that time period. Um do we reassess those goals um as a board or go back to the questions and and figure out what the? Next set of, I guess, questions or things that we want to accomplish?
Yes, previously, this has been done in board retreats, right, where the board retreat. Has given time for board members to say, what is the focus of this year? Also acknowledging what Dr. Jenkins said earlier, which is. You're if you're here for twelve years, you're going to end up with new board members. Um and so they're going to contribute to what this process looks like. And and so that has that formative evaluation, the January one, has really been where you kind of set out. Um how the process will adjust from year to year. And then Nikki, I agree with you about the three goals. What I am curious about is how you in the past have established what those three goals are going to be among board members. How have you reached that consensus? And is that something that you did during the retreat? Or is that something you did during another conversation?
We did it during the retreat and we did each person stated what they were and then we did majority rules.
Okay, so just everybody kind of looking at their three areas of focus and looking for where there's overlap. And then seeing if you can reach consensus through that. Thank you so much for for that info, Nikki.
No problem. Just glad to help. I know this is a confusing process.
Dr. Jenkins?
One thing to what Maya said, which was insightful, when you start thinking about, it's really the long view. And so we are reestablishing those goals, even if a board member come on. Because, you know, quite frankly, I'm talking about us being a blue ribbon district, right, taking it to the next level. Each year, you got to keep monitoring that. And Chris Gomez and I, we've been talking about what are the metrics upfront? How are we going to know we progress? So once we hit it, we do have to come back and say, just what Maya was saying, okay, now how do we go to the next level? Of this, because I don't think we ever reached that utopia. You you're striving for excellence. And we may hit a point, but it doesn't mean that we're there. And with this whole anti-racism piece, I think it needs to be clear. Where we are, otherwise, when we talk about black excellence, have we truly defined what does that mean? And when we hit it, are we going to really be there? What's going to be the salient? Characteristics of our district? And I think we're going to be a district continuously trying to improve.
Well said.
I think we could spend a lot of time in this conversation. Um in part, having a conversation about the conversation we're going to have on Saturday. And and.
Oh, Saturday is your retreat?
Yes.
Oh, it's gonna be.
Friday and Saturday.
Oh, Friday and Saturday. Well, wow, that is wonderful that you're going to have that much time together.
In person.
I commend you for that. It's going to be, you know, a very meaningful weekend.
Thank you.
I can see that, definitely, yeah.
I am wondering if folks have other questions for our facilitator or if we're ready to move on to the other portion of our agenda this evening. I'm seeing thumbs up for moving on to the next item. Um thank you so much for joining us this evening. And for, you know, moving us through this conversation and providing us with the tools. It was incredibly useful. And hopefully, we'll we'll all see you at the conference next year.
Oh, yes. It's been my pleasure to meet you and if you need any help, just, you know, you can give me a call. And I wish you all good luck and have fun this weekend. We're getting back together again, finally. So enjoy, enjoy. Take care, everyone. Bye bye.
Folks, I am going to turn the next portion of our agenda to be over to be chaired by Chris Karusi. Um as I have a conflict of interest that will not allow for me to participate in the conversation, Chris is going to take us through the next. Uh agenda items all the way to our adjournment. And thank you in advance, Chris, for doing that.
Thanks, Ali. Um so our next agenda item is the process for issuing teacher contracts for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Um I wanted to, before we even dive into this topic, ground this conversation in a few things. And the first thing I wanted to ground it in is gratitude. Gratitude for the incredible work that our staff has done over the past year, um educating our children through a pandemic. And I also wanted to ground it in the work that MTI and Dr. Jenkins and his team have been doing. In terms of trying to collaboratively reach a solution about um how we're presenting the the staff contracts this year. So upfront, just want to express gratitude for the work that happened last week and today to make this happen. Um secondly, I do want to ground this in the spirit of collaborative problem solving. Um I think that's what this conversation is about is um. Not only appreciating what's been done, but also figuring out how we move forward as a board because um. This is a policy issue and there are policy questions here, which I think we all need to deal with as a board and figure out where we're going to go with it. And um third, I just want to ground this in pride about the budget that we are getting very close to voting on. This is a budget that not only includes some. Um strategic equity investments that we have wanted to make for years and especially in reading and early childhood education. And we finally, like, thanks to the people who invested in the operating referendum, all of our voters and our neighbors. We're going to be able to do that. And on top of that, we've been able to budget for full. Um cost of living adjustments and step and lane advancements for our staff. So that is all built into this budget. And I think that is something we should be proud of and that we need to put out there before we even start this conversation. So with that as our our foundation, um Dr. Jenkins, do you just want to um say a few words to kind of um? Present where we're at with our staff contracts?
Uh most definitely, uh first of all, let me just say thank you for the way that you just opened it up and grounding us in what is true. Uh there's been a lot of work by our staff this year in a very unprecedented year. Uh our staff, all of our staff, and we're just so appreciative of that. And then during an unprecedented year. Just uh Kelly Rupa, can you turn your camera on, Kelly? We want to see her face there. She's been leading the team and I just want to say thank you to you. Um personally, for the work that you've been doing with our executive team and with the people in the community. And just getting all the wonderful feedback and just trying to live up to what you guys as a board have laid out in terms of the expectations in terms of our. Strategic priorities. I think you laid out some things and we've come together as a team and been there. So. Thank you, Kelly. Thank you to the board members. And I will say to you, and when we got ready to, uh and Kelly, you can say for this piece too and uh. Dr. McGregor and Pastor Hart, if you have things to add, what we did when we issued the contracts uh initially. They did not give a clear indication because of just where we worked at particular time. Uh including the steps and lanes. And we had some conversations with MTI, with the executive staff. And I think our progress since the last time we were together is just really been going along. It became bigger than what we did initially, even though. Um it wasn't intended at all to affinity one, but the language in it uh could be improved. And quite frankly, that's what we're saying right now with one another. How can we try to repair harm? And we can't be about restorative justice if we're not willing to take from those lessons ourselves. But nevertheless, we came together. Uh as an executive team, along with MTI, and we put for some language collaboratively. And which we think are going, will reflect what we want to do in terms of our core values when we talk about everyone. Being respected. The language will include uh the fact that we have the steps and lanes in it. And it's been really uh a positive work relationship to talk about how we're going to move forward. And so I'm looking forward to. Uh how we all can respond better in times, not just when things are going well. But when we have a situation, let's do the collaborative problem solver and figure it out. So uh. Ms. Rupa, I don't know if you had any other thing on that as well, or Pastor Hart or Dr. McGregor, because they've been involved with the work. And to Deidra, her growth, her leadership with HR and working with MTI on this, I have to say, hey, uh just hands up. She's been awesome with it. Any other comments?
The only thing I I would add is that, based on the um conversations that we've had thus far, I think everyone has um realized the importance of. Understanding this as an iterative process, where where as you collaborate each year. Um you get better and better. They have to come into um um that point where you um have an understanding of um. Where each other is and what other possibilities. And so, you know, we're just looking forward to um continuing this process this year. And then getting started on it right away then on the next year, so that way we can um get better at it.
Yeah, and it was acknowledgement from both sides to where we were last year, it was necessary to make those decisions. And then coming into this year, where we are right now, we're in a better place. And so I think as we move forward, this. And so I think as we move forward, this particular budget, and I thank the community for their work and passing referendum. That was the other piece why I asked on this Rupal and Chad Wheezy, he's gone now. But I just also just wanted to make sure I recognize the work that they did around the referendum to get us where we are right now and the voters passing it so successfully. And when we started talking about the whole early literacy piece, uh, looking at what we're going to do with four day uh 4K. All of this is going to be awesome and what we're doing with the world language at the middle schools. And now I really feel like our relationship is going to allow us to move into this next year, making sure we take care of our people from a socio emotional, mental health standpoint. This is going to be big to that piece in terms of, uh, I think, reestablishing positive morale with people.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Nikki, I see your hand. And before I call on you, I just want to um kind of frame our conversation moving forward around a couple of questions. So um just to clarify, the the issue that we're discussing today is the change to the staff, the contract that went out to our staff, which basically added language saying that um step in lane advancements, salary advancements would be made following the board's approval of the budget. And so we were able to work with MTI for a short term solution by coming up with a letter that will accompany the contracts that clarifies the board's intent to um pass a budget that includes full steps and step in lane adjustments. Um, however, um, there's also the longer term question about the employee handbook. Um, the employee handbook is a policy. It's a policy that goes through the board if we're going to change it. And the the employee handbook is where the step in lane schedule lives. And it includes language saying that step in lane advancements happen annually. So um the short term question is, does anybody have any like questions or comments on the um letter that um has been proposed to accompany the um contracts to clarify the board's intent to pass a budget that includes full step in lane advancements? And the second question, which I think is the bigger question we need to grapple with, is if this is going to become a permanent way of working? If we're going to begin to issue contracts that put the step in lane advancements contingent on the board passing the budget in June, the draft preliminary budget in June, do we need to modify our contract language so that we are following our policy? Um, I am concerned that by, you know, the 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 handbook makes it sound like, or it doesn't make it sound like it says that we will provide these step in lane advancements annually. And to make that contingent on a board vote, it's subtle, but it is a ch- it may actually necessitate our going back in and changing the handbook to match what we're doing in practice in the contracts. So two questions, any change, any questions or comments on the short term solution, which is providing this letter? And then the bigger question is, do we need to engage in a handbook change process? And if so, how do we move forward on that? Nikki?
The first question, I'm fine with the letter. In fact, I think the letter is actually takes a lot of responsibility. This is a trust issue. I think everyone on both sides, when you ha- when you work and negotiate, both sides are naturally distrustful. And in the past, I'm talking way past, but after Act 10, going all the way back there, it created a lot of mistrust in districts between staff and administration. And I think we all have to admit that that did happen. I can understand why people would be less than ready to trust based on that. But what I'm worried about is to change the employee handbook without, I don't want to change anything unilaterally. I want everything to go together as a group. I don't want to violate our own policy. In fact, that's the quickest way, at least the law, that's the quickest way to get in trouble is you oh is you ignore your own policy. There honestly, there's, it it's the one thing that's drilled into you, you just don't do. But more importantly, I respect our staff. But if we are honest and want to attract our best and brightest teacher, we want to attract teachers of color, teachers who have different abilities. We have the chance right now of attracting a deaf teacher who's on who's on the Paralympic team as a sprinter and one of the best teachers eh ever. But the issue isn't that, how we're going to attract them and not repel them if we can't do basic respect? I think this contract has done, this letter is doing a lot to repair a lot of harm. Jill, I'm thrilled that the board at MTI worked and met together. And I think both, I think board members should be able to watch, not participate, watch like from one side of mirror some way so that we can see how the process goes at both sides. Because I don't think, frankly, I've never seen the this particular negotiation between us and FDI. And frankly, I think it would give a better understanding to every board member what's going on. But most importantly, I just want to say that we are on one side. This isn't two different sides. We are one unit without, to be pro student, we must be pro teacher, to be pro staff and pro student in this in a year where our, I'm not trying to ramble, but in a year where COVID decimated a lot, our teachers managed to keep a lot together. But even more important, our behavioral assistants filled in, our SEAs filled in, our security assistants even took food service jobs, all of them deserved to be rewarded. And this is just a way to do that while improving morale. So this is basically a thank you. And can we please, you know, can we please, in a collaborative way, fix the handbook in a respectful collaborative manner if we're going to do that on steps and legs?
Dr. Jenkins, I saw your hand.
Um, no, go ahead. I'll I'll come back. I'm sorry, take the air turn.
Okay, do others have comments? Questions? Maya?
Yeah, so I was just going to say, I think overall, um, kind of speaking to Nikki's point of um making sure that if we are to limit any kind of confusion um moving forward, we definitely want to be as transparent um and as possible. Um, so I'm thinking that, you know, in the interest of both us as a board and um the community and the administration, it would make sense that we have conversations about the contracts, like in any revisions um or changes in our operations work group, like moving forward. Um, again, when we're talking about the handbook, it's a policy as Chris Carusi already like mentioned, it's a policy thing. Um, so it definitely should be done um together um as a board. And I think that the appropriate places, the work group for operations. So um that's just a recommendation. Um, just my comment, so.
Thank you, Maya. Chris?
Yeah, thank you. I I just want to say that I really appreciated the letter um that is going to accompany the contracts in the short term because I feel like it really clarified the issue. Um, I I don't think there was any disagreement um around providing steps and lanes and providing the cost of living adjustment that was already moving forward. And it felt like it was a little bit of miscommunication over over the timeline and and what we had to do with approving the budget by the end of June. And so I I guess for moving forward, so I appreciate that we're using this letter to clarify. Um, for moving forward, I'm curious, I mean, does our handbook committee do that work then? And then come and present that to an operations work group? Or or how would the process work for if we decided we wanted to clarify that? Um, in the handbook, because I'm not sure, I it feels like a timeline issue with when the contracts have to be issued and when we're approving our budget. So I'm still not sure how to fix that sort of gap in a timeline. Um. So I guess that's the the question I have process wise. If if, is that something that could be fixed? And and where where would the process take us to do that? How would that work?
So I saw Savian and then Nikki, but before I call on either of them, did somebody from administration want to respond to Chris's question about the process for making handbook changes?
Right, right now, what I'm going to do is just uh, and I don't have Sherry or Deidre here tonight, and I don't want to speak for them. But a part of what we're talking about is looking at our own process for how we arrived private decisions at the administrative level. What has happened, what's currently happening, and what need to happen? Because we're really committed to making sure that we have a uh trusting and transparent relationship. But we want to do it right. And I'm going to say to you guys as a board too, uh, I I appreciate Nikki's comments and saying the the board and the board, uh, the administration and MTI all working together APP. And as I said to MTI, I'm not talking about just MTI. Uh, I'm talking about everyone. We want to treat all of our employees well. And it can't just be that we treat one group well. And that means treating the administrators well. Uh, and I think it, this is one that we have to look at it, trust and coming into the district. Quite frankly, there was mistrust in the community, there's mistrust, board administrators, administrators, MTI, uh, MTI, everybody. It's just, so I think we have an opportunity with this moment to reestablish some humanity in all of us in our work. And trust, it just can't be talked about. You know, uh, a teacher said to me that our words and actions have to align. And I think that goes throughout the organization that truly, and that was one point, I think, MTI and the administration agreed upon. And this is our first step. We have to do some restorative circles and some repair if as we move our district forward. And I just think it's necessary to put that out there. And that's throughout the entire organization. No stone should be left unturned when we do this work.
And I think.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I think that letter goes a long way towards just explaining and clarifying. And I, again, I'll just say that I I really appreciate that. And I do have confidence that going forward, we can figure out a process um to make this work. So I'll be interested to hear what my other board board colleagues um think about that.
Chris, I have, I'm sorry, I have to say this. I'm saying to everyone, as superintendent, I'm going to be talking about custodians. I'm talking about administrative assistants. I'm talking about anyone substitutes in our district. Because what lies within this, and I said this to MTI, we have had some racist practices within the district, within MTI and all. And I think this is our big step. And I think we're in agreement when I said and talked to them. It starts here, but we got to permeate this thought throughout. We cannot be a district that's going to be serious about it if we're not about everyone. And so that's the stance that I'm pretty much pushing out to everybody. When we say everyone, we must mean everyone. And I'm glad that we sent it a letter out. I'm telling you, I'm happier than a pig in slop. But will it be sustained? And that can only happen by our actions and being real about it.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins.
Savian?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to re re uh i- i- iterate the pride that we should have in this budget. Um, you know, for the first time and the district's history, funding full day 4K uh for the first time in 25 years, no longer having police in our schools. Um, you know, that's something that former boards did not take action on, something that former superintendents did not take action on, but something that we did. Um, and, you know, going beyond that, especially during this year, where our teachers and staff rose to the occasion of this and met the challenges to continue to serve our kids and families and themselves. Um, from the onset, we have indicated to fully fund steps and lanes and a cost of living increase. And so to see, you know, Dr. Jenkins' work and his administrative team work with MTI leadership to make sure that that intention is reflected in the this updated letter is one. It 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 just signals for me a uh a a a change in direction. Because for the past 10 years or so, there's just been a series of escalating tensions between MTI and the administration um and and the board even. Um, and so I think we really have to be committed to setting a new tone. And as Nikki said, uh, realizing that we're all on one side, we have a shared responsibility in terms of outcomes for our kids. Um, when it comes to this specific conversation, um, I think that we have to let the handbook committee do its work. And so what level of oversight should the board provide? Uh, Maya mentioned, you know, talking about it and the operations work group. Should we have a representative from MTI and administration uh provide a report to the board on ongoing negotiations? Um, but what is the uh role and the avenues the board can provide oversight to changes if necessary in the contract? Um, I do think that, you know, this change in language, um, in some ways, you know, funding from the state level or federal level can be seen as uh anything but certain, uh, especially over recent years. Um, and so we definitely want to preserve our flexibility so all parties, you know, administration, the union, the board, everybody can come together and find a solution going forward should something happen at state level, not this year, but next in the years going forward. Um, but I am really appreciative of a, you know, the, you know, even though there was a, you know, i- i- there was harm done. And Dr. Jenkins has said multiple times to me that good customer service is getting it right the first time. So hopefully, we can always learn from this mistake and uh prevent it from happening in the uh in the future. Um, but I I do hope that this is a step towards setting a new tone in our relationship between administration, the board, and the union.
Um, this question actually is for Dr. Jenkins, because it's a.
I had my hand up, Nikki, for a while.
Yeah, Nikki would.
That that it was Savian and me.
Oh, Nikki, would you be willing to let Ananda go? Because she hasn't.
Sure, I just I thought I was.
Yeah, don't worry, I haven't forgotten about you.
Oh, hey, no problem. I just didn't know.
Oh, maybe I just don't know what's the protocol, because I feel like I have tried to raise my hand. Now I'm.
I'm sorry, Ananda, go ahead, please do.
No, no problems, Nikki. Thank you. Um, I I really appreciate uh a lot of the comments were shared tonight. I um, when Dr. Jenkins was mentioned about the the restoring of trust, um, and I found that to be extremely important. I think one thing that I haven't heard is 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 a formal apology from any of my colleagues. So I want to say that I do apologize for all the harm that that has caused to many of our staff. And I sincere, I sincerely hope that folks understand that we are uh uh both listening to what the consequences of 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 those actions had on folks on in that letter, on the language in the contract, and that we are addressing that both from this moment, but also in a sustainable way. So thank you, Chris, for uh the way in which you had your opening remarks and of gratitudes for everyone that's been working. But I I do think that that is important to also say, like, I there's a combination of things that, you know, made this situation be awkward and definitely did not reflect the intentions of of myself and that of my colleagues and nor the superintendent. So I think it's important to uh to acknowledge that, you know, this happened. This has caused a a a lot of distress for folks. And I'm I'm sincerely apologizing for that. And we're uh going to continue to work diligently to to address uh the situation at this moment and continue to address for the long term. So thank you and thank you again, Nikki.
Hey, no problem. Um, actually, you have an excellent point. Harm was done. I, as Savian also put it, you can't move on without admitting harm was done and apologize for those ashes, which I do apologize that I had not put it in words. And that was incorrect. And Ananda, I appreciate the call out on this to the board because that's something that needed to be done. Because if we truly believe in restorative practices, that means following them even in our own. Um, but one other thing, that's a quick question for Dr. Jenkins. Does that mean that we're reissuing the contracts or do include that?
We're in the middle of having that discussion. If it's a letter or a contract, they just met this morning and they're going to get back tomorrow. We have our attorneys from MTI and from the district who's going to be having that conversation in the best next step. But one of the things that you said earlier, uh, Nikki, and I want to say to everyone, it really came up about making unilateral decisions and what has happened of the past. But we really looking for a path forward. And we think that, you know, unfortunate, and yes, we do apologize for what happened. But I think this is going to be an opportunity for us to have a new ways of working. Uh, I have to give credit to uh Andy, uh, waiting Mike Jones and to Ed Soloski, uh, along with the executive team, how everyone came together. And we really had some strong conversation, but it wasn't just fighting. People genuinely want to take a step forward. So we'll see from here. We said we would come together and do collaborative problem solving and uh just think about how we work moving forward. But trying to really eliminate the unilateral decision maker, even from themselves.
I really appreciate that, Dr. Jenkins. I I hope my board appreciates as much as I do. I figure they do. In fact, they're probably ahead of me at appreciating because I'm bad at saying thank you, always have been. But here's the one thing that I I do hope that it works out, the contracts are reissued. Always have been. But here's the one thing that I, I do hope that it works out, the contracts are reissued, because people always get I'm one of those as an attorney who gets really bitter on details, like my training, but I hope everything works out, and I think it will. I think everyone's in a good place, and I'm glad that we've worked out a solution. And not by me, I mean MTI, I mean our district, I mean our administration, so now we can focus on what's important to our students.
Yeah, and one last thing, we all just really talking about what this collaboration really mean. It can't mean that one person is getting everything that they want every time. That's not true collaboration. So when we go through our collaborative problem solving, that's a part of it. We calibrated on what this collaboration really means.
Maya?
Yeah, I just had a, um, kind of a quick question. Um, and it just went along with what Nikki was asking about, um, the contracts being reissued. Uh, I know that there isn't anyone from HR here, but um, like, I guess what is the, the, the role of um HR in this and moving forward? Are they the ones who are determining this, or um, I guess who's, who's determining that ultimate?
Well, actually, we're working it out. Like I said, the attorneys are gonna be meeting tomorrow. We both uh, both MTI and administration work together, like what's gonna be the best path forward. The language which we shared, that was the language that, and it was just a little tweet, and then it was about whether or not we could reissue the contract. To reissue, to reissue the contract is a very timely process, uh, and we know that. So both sides know that now. So if they're willing to wait, the board still doesn't vote on it uh fully until the twenty-eighth, I think it is, of June, but we've agreed pretty much in principle with where we are after the attorneys uh meet in terms of the language that we're talking about tomorrow, then we'll be able to give you a fuller answer on that. But it takes some time to go. Everyone thinks it's simple. No, it's not simple. It's, it's gonna be pretty much loaded, and MTI recognize that too on HR, it's gonna be a lot of work on them to reissue. But we
Okay, yeah, thank you for that. Um, I guess my, my biggest thing is that um, to just speak with the current situation. Handling it with the letter, I think is really good. Um, sending it out so that there's more clarity. Um, you know, speaking with different members of administration, even I got better clarity on on the contract, the language and the changes. So I do appreciate um that and do appreciate those that met with me and um could explain it to me. I think moving forward, I think not only how do we address it now, but then how do we address it going? So speaking to Chris, um, Chris Goldman Schmidt's question earlier about so then what is going to be the process? How are we going to make a better process so that there is um less confusion, more clarity, more transparency, um, and that goes with mail. We don't always think about mail, right? Um, and sending out um all the contracts and then having to resend the contracts out, obviously that is going to be um extremely expensive. Um, so it's just a kind of a thought, uh, maybe to think about when trying to create some solutions. And how can we save money or save, um, save on postage by making sure that we do it correct the first time. Um, and not having to backpedal and such. So it just goes with that, so something to think about.
No doubt, and we're thinking about that. And again, we don't want to make a unilateral decision. That's what we'd love to table with. So we're talking through that, all of it, and what's gonna be in the best interest of both sides of thinking about it. Uh, but definitely, uh, you heard Savian say earlier, you'll probably hear me say it a few times, uh, which I learned from someone else. Customer service is getting it right the first time, and that's our aim moving forward.
Ananda?
Thank you, Chris. Actually, my question is really simple. Does the staff, does all our staff know that this has been incorrect and that we are in this process of addressing it? And then that the intention from the board is to fulfill what's in, is in the handbook and, and you know, what we're actually already decided to be, become?
Well, we want to come out uh with the same message. I laid out for you guys like the timeline that I was meeting with the team, gonna send you the language. Then we were gonna have the meeting this morning, we're meeting tonight. So tomorrow morning after the attorneys, we both are gonna be sharing out a communication, but they've met with their executive team. I met with the executive staff. And Maya, I'm sorry, I forgot to say in there too, June fifteenth is technically when we've had asked for the contract to be by previously. So all of that had to be considered in it as well. If we go to reissue the contract, would we still be able to meet that timeline? That was a part of it. So yes, um, we plan to make sure it's wide known, but they've been talking about it as we've been talking about it. And both sides have been talking about we're in conversation, uh, Ananda, for this. And it's positive. Right now, I haven't heard one thing back from anyone. Everybody acknowledged, you know, hey, this is something we could have done differently. And uh, you know, it was apology offered up and uh, and accepted. And let me say too, MTI stepped up in a positive way, acknowledging parts of uh, just we, we, both sides realized there's been harm done. And I thought that was huge for both sides to sit there and acknowledge it and agree to move forward together. Not about the contract, not about issuing the contract. It didn't have anything to do with that, but we're just talking about how we need to work together moving forward.
So thank you so much to everyone for these really good comments. Um, I'm gonna attempt to summarize what I think are steps moving forward. Um, when it comes to the language that has been proposed, um, thank you so much, Dr. Jenkins, for um talking to us about the process that is happening right now with attorneys to not only um make a decision about whether this needs to be a letter or a contract revision, but also, you know, the big picture to repair harm that has been done. And um, I would just ask that the board be kept in the loop as that process unfolds. Um, state law does say that um contracts are issued by the board, so the board needs to be on top of what's happening with the contracts. Um, however, I think in the longer term, this is a handbook issue. And um, we switched to doing handbook review every other year. I believe this coming year is a handbook review year. I think the um changes we made to surplus and layoff policy, we were doing in an off year this year. So this is an opportunity for us to um use the collaborative handbook process that is outlined in the handbook to address this issue, because to continue to issue contracts that don't align with the handbook is problematic. So we need, and um, it takes away an opportunity for employee voice. So the collaborative handbook process I would propose is the best avenue to ensure that we come to a resolution on this problem where everybody is at the table. Um, Dr. Jenkins, does that sound good to you?
Yeah, let me say this. We definitely, we're revisiting just a lot of our practices, uh, Chris, because it's been a lot of just not on this, uh, several things in terms of we're trying to build trust, but I don't wanna make that decision right here on the spot now, and I know that I just agreed to go through a collaborative uh problem solving with the groups is uh simple as that, and we're gonna talk about it. I think transparency for all of us is gonna be key. And um, how we communicate with one another too respectfully. Let me say that, but I don't want anything to get in the way of what we just committed to, to work through a process where it's not unilateral decision making. It is collaborative. And then I would like to report back after we hear back from attorneys tomorrow and after I have my next meeting with MTI to see how we forge uh forward. Um, that's what I would say.
So um, I also hea- heard pretty loud and clear the importance of transparency um and trust as we go through this process. So um, and I did, you know, I, it seemed that I heard most members of the board saying that they felt that the handbook was the appropriate place to work on this. So I think there is, you know, and please feel free to speak up if you disagree. But I think, you know, without voting on it, there is a feeling at least on the board that we need to make sure that our practices follow our policies, and our policy in this case is the handbook. So um, I would, as a board, say we do need to prioritize if this contract change is gonna become permanent, making sure that that permanence is decided through the collaborative handbook process.
And just know, you know, as a board, you guys can talk about it, deliberate on it, and do what you need to do on that in terms of what I'm saying, I wanna make sure in my transparency, I'm not committing and saying something here and go and doing something else tomorrow. I said to the MTI that I would bring this conversation to you. I would come back and have a conversation with them. Then I'm gonna report back out. But as a board, if you just say, hey, we wanna take this because it is policy and come up with a different cadence for the handbook, you're still the board, you know, at the end of the day, if you wanna do that. But in terms of us building trust with one another, I think you're gonna have to trust me to do my job. And if you as a board trust me to do my job, and then I have to be transparent, coming back with you, so we can work together. Uh, when you make, I have to agree with the teachers. You're making unilateral decisions at any level. It's not gonna wind up good uh for anyone. Long term, I'm saying if we really want to say we wanna be a different district, have a different culture, I think how we go about approaching one another is gonna be important.
I appreciate that, Dr. Jenkins. I, I think we all completely agree with you on that, that we need to work collaboratively. Um, I saw Savian, and then I think Ananda, and then Nikki.
Yeah, I think a conversation on whether this is a permanent change uh is obviously going to take, take place. And depending on the outcome of that conversation, whether that um fits within our, our, our policy is another conversation as well, cause that would, that would indicate whether we need to vote or not uh saying outright. I, I don't think that we uh do need to vote on it outright. Uh, however, you know, as Dr. Jenkins said, we, we, we do need to trust the role of the superintendent in terms of collaborating with all employee units.
Ananda?
Actually, Maya
I was about to say my hands up. I was gonna say that. Thank you, it's not. It's hard to see their hands, Maya and Nana, so I'm watching for both of their hands now.
Sorry, Maya?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that um to Dr. Jenkins' point. Um, and I think everything that has been echoed tonight about transparency, collaboration. Um, even if it's, in my eyes, even if it is something that the board is working on, um, my hope is um, in the way I like to work, is that we still are collaborating. So even if it's a decision that we ultimately make, um, I do think it's important to have everyone a part of that, whether it's MTI representing um, our, our teachers and our staff and, and administration also there. Um, so I, I I don't think um that we will just go ahead and just do things, right? I mean, we have that power to, but again, um, the, the, there's always a difference between um intent and impact, right? And so even if we intend to do these changes, what is our impact on that? So I, I do think, you know, collaboration is a big key to this. Um, and so um, that's the way, at least I look at it. Um, however, we do have the ultimate say so, but um, I think that working together makes it a lot more better. Um, so that's just, I just wanted just to clarify that too, cause I do understand that, you know, we trust you to do your job. Um, at the same time, um, we're also still working with you, right? Um, and it's, and it's a teamwork effort um to do the best, and um, it's everyone together, so just putting that out there.
Thank you.
Nikki?
Um, I'm gonna use a basketball analogy. I trust you to make the three-point shot at the end of the game, but I'd like to have the ability to call the timeout partway through to make sure we can discuss it and possibly vote on said, said play before we actually call it. In English, that means could we please ha- have a discussion in the, in the operations work group? It has nothing to do with not trading, trusting my superintendent who I trust implicitly. It means just making sure I can see the lay of land in case something happens and someone trips someone accidentally and the star player goes out with a spray deck, we gotta have a plan B. I think that this works better if we have that in the hand, in the operation work group, and we have a vote if needed. It may not be.
Well, let me just say, I'm not Steph Curry. I'm Dennis Rodman, so you better call a timeout and get the ball in the right person's hand.
Ah, let's see, that's interesting, cause Phil Jackson would let the time go. He wouldn't call a timeout anyway.
I know, and I hated that about that man.
Yeah. Thank you though, for all of you, for your comments.
Are there any more comments? Hearing none. I think we've reached a really good place. Um, I wanna thank Dr. Jenkins again for your leadership and for working with MTI and for your commitment to um moving forward um down the road collaboratively. I think that's the most important thing here, and I really appreciate your, your dedication to looking at ways of working and make sure we're working in a way where we have employee voice, we have administration voice, and we have the board's voice in the room, and that we're working transparently. Um, I think we can keep this on the operations work group agenda so that the board is kept in the loop about where we're moving. And um, on that note,
You're gonna close the meeting without saying anything about the big ideas? Come on, we had a big day on Saturday in this district. We had some fabulous ideas to come up to go along with this fabulous budget. You have to mention it, okay?
I can mention it, but we're not noticed to discuss it, so.
Yes, no, so that's it. It was a fabulous meeting on Saturday in this district, MMSD. We had ten fabulous ideas. Well, actually, we had three hundred and something, but I just thought I'd say that piece though. That's a part of collaboration, right? So it is on this agenda. We were collaborating on that, the whole community. Tell them to agree me on that one.
Um, comments when you used to take, send us out, or are we good?
Just thank everybody seriously in the community. We could not be in this budget position if we did not have this strong support of our community in passing the referendum. This refer, this referendum allowed us to do things in our community that was, that's really historic in terms of shoring up some of our facilities and also at the same time, meeting some of our strategic priorities around early literacy and beyond. And as I said earlier, the four-day 4K, we actually tapped into eight of our schools now gonna be full-day 4K as we're, and that's fifty percent of our most impoverished uh schools, and we're looking at language, that was a priority, and we pushed that forward. It also brought the community together in many ways in terms of, we're looking at the budget, getting their feedback, and you see the number of times we're going out in the community. We just wanna say thank you to everyone, and I think the community is gonna be very pleased at the end of the day when they see this particular budget come forward. So thank you.
All right. Thanks so much, Dr. Jenkins. Um, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.